Okay, thank you. All stand please for the invocation from Councilman Vasquez.
Thank you, Mayor. Dear God, we come before you tonight to ask for your blessing. As we come together in this august body to conduct the business of our neighbors. Grant us patience and light to conduct ourselves cordially in our deliberations. We ask this in your name and we pray, amen.
Let's all join in for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to our meeting tonight, January 24th. Great to see everyone here in the audience and those that are joining us virtually. Let's move to the first agenda item. We have no awards and presentations tonight. So we'll move to open forum. Is there, Juan, is there anyone signed up for open forum? Oh, I think, yes, one second. And do we have anyone virtually?
Can you check after?
Put his hand on there.
After Mr. Crossland, come on up. Martin Crossland?
Yes, my name is Martin Crossland. Oh, sorry. And my residence is 912 Avenue. And I've just come here because one always hears criticism of the council of Miami Springs. I've come here to praise it. I have no criticisms, really, nothing at all. I've just got a couple of things. Or people hate the roundabout. I absolutely love it. I've lived here for 40 years and since this roundabout, I've been.
You mean circle. I want to clarify, you mean circle, right? Because I know you're from England. You're calling it roundabout.
It's a roundabout, though.
And I've been able to drive from Westwood Drive to Hialeah Drive three times now without stopping once. If the lights go right, that's what you can do. Have there been more accidents? Yes, it's because people have to get used to it.
Right.
But it's brilliant. I love it. Buildings on the circle and everything. I think more life comes to Miami Springs, the better it's going to be. Especially the idea of Westwood Drive. I hope you follow through on that one. That would be great. I'd love to see that. Speeding, yes, we have a problem, but I've noticed, you've probably all noticed that there are more police around. The police can't be there for 24 hours. I think you should look at speed humps. VG already has some on Ludlum Drive. Try them out. They're not, a lot of people said, oh, we don't want speed bumps. They're not bumps. They're not like supermarket bumps. They are humps. If it's 30 miles an hour, you can go over it 30 miles an hour and you won't fly up in the air. Speed bumps, that's, that's the way. And it's just, thank you for all of you for all the work you're doing. I think it's great. I think you're a wonderful council, especially a wonderful mayor. And I'm looking forward to hearing about the 36th Street. I think it's, we need something there and we'll see what is the negative part. Maybe those people that live nearby don't want to see trucks going through the air. I don't know. 36th Street is a big problem. I would like to get off 112 without having to line up for four or five miles. Get off with this overpass, that would make it much easier. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Martin, you can, you can come back anytime.
Okay, and you're the only one signed up on, for a public forum in person and we have no one virtually, Juan?
That's correct, man. We have no one virtually.
All right, thank you. All right, so let's move to the next agenda item, which is approval of council minutes. The council minutes from the January 10th meeting.
To the chair, motion to move item 6A, ma'am.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Yes, Vice Mayor Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Best?
Hi.
Councilman Fajad?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
And Mayor Mitchell?
Yes. Thank you. Agenda item seven, reports from boards and commissions. And the first agenda item is a report from Chair Ernie Aloma from the Board of Adjustment, Planning and Zoning. Hi, welcome.
Ernie Aloma, 258 Pinecrest Drive. And as you mentioned, I chair not only the zoning and planning board, but the Board of Adjustments. So I'm not sure what kind of report you were looking at because, I mean, I just got invited to come here. But I could give you a brief summary of what we do.
That's all.
And I could tell you, you know, sort of how it's going and if you guys could help. And we'll go, before that, I do want to welcome you. I see a lot of new faces. And, you know, I echo the gentleman's statements. I think you guys are doing a great job. By the way, I, I grew up in Jamaica and the speed bumps are called sleeping policemen.
Yeah.
No way.
Not that because they're not working, it's just that they do the work of a policeman who's not there, so anyways, a side track. So anyways, in the Board of Adjustments, we hear a lot of cases when residents want to either stretch the code or try to get a variance for things that they have inherited as new homeowners. Or, you know, something that sort of makes sense, you know, you know, they want to add a little bit more, you know, here, move a tree here, move, you know. So, you know, those things happen often. They come in front of us, you know, we discuss it, we go through the merits of them. And then obviously we make a recommendation. As you all know, we're all volunteers. We recommend to you the council and you make the ultimate decision. In the zoning and planning board, as you guys know, all the new construction goes in front of us. We work closely, hand in hand with Chris, our city planner. And we go again through the merits of, you know, the application or not. You know, a lot of times it's dealing with the FARs, you know, the amount of units, you know, the amount of parking spaces and so on. So again, we go through the motions and then on the merits of the application, we voted down or not. Then obviously it comes to you for a final approval. So, you know, as far as us wanting, you know, before that, let me actually compliment, you know, the board that we have. I mean, I've been on the board for a while. And this is actually a board where most of the guys are either in the business of, you know, architecture or city planning or engineering and have a lot of experience. So when we actually make a recommendation, it's actually, we like to think it's actually one based on fact and experience. It isn't just, you know, I mean, not that there is a wrong career or not, but at least there's one. Your careers are more related to what we're actually doing. So it's a, you know, I think it's a very educated, you know, recommendation made to you. So by saying that, when the decisions come to you or at least the recommendations come to you, it's in the past. It hasn't happened with you guys, but in the past, we've had unanimous decisions where we have felt all incredibly strong about denying or approving a case based on the merits and based on our experience, because this is what we do for a living. And it's come to the council and it has been reversed by unanimous decision. And that to us is sort of like, not necessarily as far as a slap in the face, but it is somewhat, you know, thumbing your nose at us because, you know, it's, it's something that we took the time to study. A lot of us, actually, when we get our cases, we visit the sites. So we discuss it and to make a recommendation, I have it totally reversed. Sort of says, you know, you guys are basically what you are. You're just recommending and if we like it, fine. If we don't, tough. So, you know, at the very least, maybe, I, I don't know if legally, you know, we could discuss cases with you guys. I don't see why not, but at least so that you understand our thought process. Because when you read minutes, you really don't go through what's in our, in our minds. I mean, you just see what was written in a very summarized way. But at least we could tell you the merits and, and sort of the details that we looked at to make sure that we came to the best recommendations that we could possibly make. That, you know, helps obviously the city and the citizens at the same time while not hindering future business and so on. So that's the only thing I do ask of you, because it's happened, I think this is my ninth or 10th year. I've forgotten because it's been a while. I'm the last surviving member basically since even before Dan actually graduated. So, Dan has been, you know, so, you know, it's, it hasn't happened with you guys. So, you know, I'm just sort of, you know, telling you what we would like to see. But we know, we really have a great board. Even the alternate is a very helpful gentleman. So I'm open to any questions that you may have of us. You know, we're obviously doing our best and continue to do so.
Through the chair, Ernie, thanks for coming tonight. I know you've been on there a long time. Were you, were you there with Jack Oden?
No, I think I.
Came in right after that?
After, yeah. So I was with Adriana, who's a judge now.
Yep.
With Dan.
Yep.
With Manny.
Yep. For a while. I, I do know this relative to one of your statements that you made there about discussing an issue like that. I think we're probably better off not discussing an issue with you because that kind of takes away from the checks and balances of how the system is set up. And I think you'd find that the attorney would offer that same advice.
And that's why, that's why, you know, I said that, because I wasn't sure if, you know, legally you could do that, but, you know.
And as far as, as far as, you know, downvotes against what you guys approve. I've, I've seen some of that. I've, I've been sitting up here when, when some of that stuff has happened. And it's usually done with good cause and, and perhaps cause that never even came to you guys, that you didn't even know about. Because a lot of these people, what they'll do is they'll come and they'll go for the variance, you know, outside of you guys and go for, you know, the quasi judicial thing that we have to do from you guys and, and make a logical decision based on, again, what's in front of us. We do get advance notice of that and we have the opportunity as well as city council persons to go out on site or to find out anything that we on our own can find out without having the discussion among ourselves. But it's kind of the same setup as you. We operate under the same manual.
Yeah, very no.
So that's going to happen, I think. What you suggest, and I understand your feelings on it, for sure.
Yeah.
I mean, if I was in your shoes, I'd, I'd wonder too.
There's one in particular that really.
Yeah.
Things, but, you know.
And one day, one day we'll have a cup of coffee and discuss.
Oh, 100%.
Okay, thanks for being. Well, we can do that too, but thanks for coming, Ernie.
Ernie, I wanted to thank you so much for coming. The reason that we asked you to be here and we're asking all the boards is because it seems like in the past, a lot of times, like the boards and the council were operating in like parallel universes, you know, and, and we weren't really communicating. We weren't, we greatly appreciate the work that the advisory boards do for us. I mean, you're, you're taking a big load off our backs by reviewing issues that, you know, that require really a lot of, of depth and thought and, you know, things that we may not be able to get to here and then presenting your opinions. And again, it's, what's great about that is like you said, we're tapping into the professional expertise that's available in our community of volunteers who have this experience, have this knowledge and are willing to serve in, you know, on advisory boards to sift through information and, and kind of give their, look through the merits of something and, or the problems with it and give us your recommendation. So I think almost always, and I'm sure there's been exceptions, we do, you know, go with the recommendations that are presented and by no means, if we were not to, do, is it because we don't value your input at all, yours and the board's, a great deal, a great deal. And, and giving up your time to do that. And it's kind of, I think a lot of the board positions are bankless jobs because even us on the council, you know, people go, oh, but you're on the council, you're doing, you know, but who's recognizing the work that the board members or advisory board members are doing and you're putting in a great deal of time. So. And the reason that we wanted to, to have on a yearly basis, the boards or more often, whenever you want to and you feel like you'd like to bring an issue to us, you know, you're welcome to, but at least on a yearly basis that you give us just a summary of how the board's going, what, let us know how we can support you if there's anything that we can do, you know, to support you and that, you know, that.
Our two boards are right now, they're, they're on cruise control. I mean, we have actually, you know, have a very efficient system. So it's actually working, working very well. So, yeah, and I actually, I do like the idea of you or whoever's idea it was. Maybe as a joint body, you all decided to actually have the boards and even some of the members come up. Because in the past, it was the opposite way. You know, some of the members, whenever they had a case that they had interest in, would actually come and sit in that front row and, you know, with their body language sort of let us know, you know, what they wanted the outcome to be. I mean, luckily for me, I'm a volunteer, so I really, that has no effect whatsoever and I try to keep it, you know, as fair as, as possible. But I think it's a great idea. I mean, then we have no problems whether it's me or any, you know, the vice chair or any of the members to come up and, you know, give you a sort of an update.
Yes, we'd like to. Or, or anything that you come across that you realize, you know what, we really should have the council support or the council, you know, or, or something that should be looked at to review, change the way it's processed or whatever, you know, we want to know. We greatly, greatly appreciate. I know myself, I'm trying to make all the board meetings, you know, I can't make them all, but I mean, at least once a year to attend each board meeting. So if you ever see me in the back, it's not anybody language. I tend to move around a lot. I'm not meaning anything. It's just, I, you know, I want, as a courtesy to the boards, to, to make sure to, to sit in at least once on, you know.
It is somewhat of a lonely. So, you know, other than the participant or the, the citizens that have something in, obviously on the table. But, you know, for, for sure, the more the merrier.
But it's, it's not just the council that values the work of your board and, and the other boards. And I know Marlene's here for the code enforcement board tonight. It's the residents not even knowing about it. They really do value your service because it makes our community so much better. So thank you. Is there anything?
To the chair?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. First of all, Ernie, thank you. Thank you for volunteering. Thank you, all of the members of, of both boards for this because it's a lot of time, right? And I don't think I've been on the dais when something from your boards has come up yet.
It hasn't happened with this administration.
Right. So, so I, I, first of all, to echo something the mayor said when we talked about asking the boards to come and so we could have an exchange like this, clearly we'd like for all board members to come. It's an opportunity because we can't do it, you know, I can't show up to your board meeting and engage, you know, that would not be right. I am wondering, Madam Mayor, and just something procedurally, because I haven't been here when they presented. How is that done? In other words, when something, a recommendation from them comes to the city, does a member of the chair present that or is it something that's given in writing? And the reason I'm asking the question, I don't know if, if it's procedurally correct or acceptable, is that if, if that is not the case, then maybe that could be the case. Could we engage with us at the dais, questions or, or opportunities to engage with them as we're deliberating?
Heidi, perhaps you can answer, Councilman Vasquez's?
It's usually Chris, right?
Actually, I think it comes as part of your package. So it becomes an item. It's one of the things that we typically do, not typically, we actually do all the time. Is that once we reach a recommendation, which is our decision.
Yes.
Comes your recommendation or when it's to you, we actually tell all the applicants, you know, you have 10 days. Don't do anything. Don't go now, we'll be paying for permits because you have to wait for the council. Because we meet on an opposite Monday as you.
Yes, yes.
So obviously within 10 days, there is a meeting where you guys will discuss it. So it comes up as part of your packet. You know, it's open for discussion. You, you know, the, the applicants will come and sit and you guys discuss this. So I think that's how it makes it to you. And then obviously.
We know the recommendation.
Yeah, you make it official.
But I think from what Councilman Vasquez is asking is whether during, we're discussing it.
When you make a recommendation on a particular situation.
Well, they make the recommendation in writing, but I think what you're asking is during the discussion, our discussion, could they be here?
Ernie mentioned that, you know, not everything, you can, can't capture everything in the written. Is there, is there an opportunity to then ask questions? Do we have that opportunity?
And you're saying at a meeting of them. So Heidi, I'll let you.
No, no.
No, I think he means at a council meeting.
Right, that's what I'm saying, at one of our council meetings of them.
No, the council, when you're considering their recommendation, when it comes to you and your agenda and you're considering it, he'd like to have a member of the, whether it's the chair or to be able to ask questions about that.
Right, that's, that's, I know, I think that's what I understand, but that's what I'm asking Heidi, if that's possible. Because usually the board, the board is not involved then.
Just like Juan, I mean, today Juan called me, not today, he called me with ample time in advance and asked me to come and join him. So it's obviously not every case, it's going to be their contentious or such importance that it warrants, you know, my presence. But obviously that's up to you guys. But if you do, you know, think that, you know, it will clarify things, I have no problems. Because at the end of the day, what we want to do is actually serve and get the best thing or the best decision that we think.
Through the chair, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ernie, I'm sorry.
For the sentence, so.
Yeah, I, I was addressing the earlier concern that you mentioned about, they had a unanimous recommendation and the council voted a different way.
Unanimously.
Unanimously, yes. So it, and that's my question is procedurally, in addition to the written presentation, can they be here for a conversation with us?
I think, and that's what I'm asking Heidi.
Yes.
If that's the case, because then we get into discussion, which I don't know. I mean, it might be fine, but with the board members instead of dealing.
Obviously, there's, there's, you know, Heidi, I don't know.
Listening to us?
She is, she had.
I think, the chair, I think we're looking at here.
Are you waiting to speak?
Okay, all right, thank you.
It's a situation that Chris, basically, once, once the chair of adjustment and planning is done, the board is adjudicating, they're, they're out of the picture. There's, here's the recommendation. Chris runs with the recommendation. He is here as a representative of basically what that board said. And Chris, 99.99% of the time agrees with adjustment and planning.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Actually. Yes, yes, Ish.
Yeah, actually.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Yes, go ahead, Heidi. One second. I mean, go ahead, please.
So, so, yeah, when, when Chris comes before the council, he's not, he's, he's not supporting or, or not the board's recommendation. He's simply advising you of their results. Chris is representing the city's position. He, he provides you with his analysis. The applicants provide you with their, with their analysis. You have that in, in your backup. You see their application. And I don't think that in the time that I've been with the city, we've had the applicants, at least not recently, the applicants haven't necessarily provided a, a long presentation before the council. Because generally the council hears from Chris and what the city's recommendation is. And then here's what the board's recommendation is and then renders a decision. So, does that help clarify the things for you, Councilman Vasquez?
It's pretty much it, but I think it's, again, it still mirrors each other as a rule.
Right. So, but I think what Councilman Vasquez, if, I mean, allow me to sort of read your mind, is that you want us here so that you could pick up rain as to how we came to our decision. So sort of, you know, an, an extra resource so that you could make even a more educated, you know, which again, we've already made a recommendation, but at least, you know, maybe something comes to mind and you say, hey, why did you guys agree to this when to us is a no brainer? And then we could give you whatever research.
We wouldn't say it quite like that.
No, but, you know.
No, but I, I get, I get your point. And, and yes, I was, I was, I was responding a little bit to your, your presentation. Because number one, I appreciate you and all the time that all of you put in. Number two, when I was on the campaign trail last year, I talked to folks who'd served on different boards. And, you know, I, it bothered me a little bit, the sentiment that generally they don't listen to us, you know, and I thought that was not a good vibe to have. And so if there's, again, procedurally, because this is different than anything I've been in front of so far as a councilman. Just to take it under consideration, I guess.
Heidi, so I'm not sure I understood what you recommended on this. Is it, what Councilman Vasquez is, is asking, is at a council meeting when we're reviewing something and we have in writing the board's recommendation of, you know, that it be denied or accepted, you know, unanimously or not, that the board should be here, a board member should be here to, in case we have questions as to why they arrived at that decision? Is that something that's acceptable? Is that, that's what you're asking, right?
Yes, exactly. That's, I'm echoing what.
So actually the council meeting, we would also, in addition to considering the topic, we would be, may be asking questions of a board member on the, in Ernie's board as to how they arrived at their decision, their recommendation.
Certainly, I don't think it would be a good idea for us to actually sort of like litigate the case again, but at least you do have a question as to how we came to our decision. You know, fortunately, what happens here is, you know, I've seen it, is that many of the cases that come to you that have been denied, you know, by unanimous decision by our board, come to you, but we're not here present. So what happens is sometimes you get a somewhat slightly different story by the applicant. Not, obviously Chris is on the book. I mean, by the book and he will defend us. But, you know, what I've actually seen some of the tapes on the council meetings and it's kind of like surprising and some of the statements that some of the applicants have made in trying to overturn, you know, the recommendation because it hasn't been decided on yet. So, yeah, I mean, either way, it's, it's up to you guys. I mean, I don't think obviously the smaller cases need that, but some of the more contentious items that come up, you know, the circle, you know, condos, some of the bigger hotels, you know, things of that nature, obviously, you know, sometimes I think the architects and the attorneys for the applicants come up and give you like a little brief, you know, presentation. So again, obviously, you know, everything has two sides. You know, everything is relative to whatever, you know, has been said. So I have no problem, you know, if, if you need me to come and items like that, I have no problem sitting there. And, you know, if you actually reach out to me, I'll answer. If not, I'll just sit and enjoy the show.
And again, the, the only cases that come to us, just for those that might not understand how the process works, is that the only ones that come to us are those that are repealed, period.
I think technically they all.
I'm sorry.
That's, that's not actually the case.
They all come to you.
They all come.
Overstamped them, the ones that are no.
But we don't, but there's no, we, we don't address, we address the ones that are repealed as, 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 not as a city council though, but as a separate entity.
But every, every recommendation that comes from planning and zoning is a recommendation, has to come to council.
Yeah.
A lot of them are simple enough and obviously if you guys agree, you know, in unity, then you, you know, just, okay, agreed. Next, if somebody makes a motion, somebody seconds it, gone. Obviously, the ones that have been denied probably need a little bit more discussion on your end, unless you agree to deny it also. But obviously you have to give the applicant a second take, you know, what his opinion is. So, but, you know, either way, you know, the idea is the whole and, you know, I have no problem, that's the case.
Okay. Thank you again, Ernie. And Heidi, can you just refresh what your position is on this as to what Councilman Vasquez? Because in case it comes up in the future, I want to, kind of, we're all on the same page.
I think one of the things that I will be working on in the, hopefully this year, that's the plan, is to better clarify the Board of Adjustment, Planning Board regulations, that section of our code. It's a very difficult code to read. The procedures are not, frankly, and I think to Councilman Vasquez's point, you sit and read the procedures. It's not clear necessarily how some things are supposed to work. And I think that one of the things that we have is, you know, we have these two boards and it's the same people on the boards and we have two separate meetings and it's a very nuanced thing as to why certain things go before one board and the other. So that's one of the things that I'd like to clean up and bring you that ordinance later this year. But as far as the question of whether the board members should be appearing before the council, I don't think that's been traditionally done. And I would think that the reasoning for that is that you're sitting in a quasi judicial capacity. So you're sitting as judges. So you have to review the evidence that's before you, not sort of extra items. So you get your recommendation and perhaps it's a matter of being a little clearer in what the recommendation is and, and having, it's been a while since we've had one of these hearings, but maybe having the, the recommendation be a little more explicit as to the reasoning why the, the board has rendered that recommendation. It has to be based on the competent substantial evidence that's presented to the board at that hearing. So they can't consider things outside of what's being presented to them that evening, whether by the city's staff, the staff report and whatever's presented by the applicant and their experts, such as their architect, their engineer, contractors, et cetera. So that's what gets considered and that is, you know, once the board listens to that presentation, then the board is making, you know, the board deliberates, they can ask questions and cross examine basically any of the witnesses. They can ask questions, um, and cross-examine basically, uh, any of the witnesses, and then they render their decision. Then that decision, that recommendation, rather, is. Um, transmitted to the council, and the council is able to hear it. Um, I know that. Uh, in some places, um, council members will will listen to the audio or the tape. Or watch the Zoom of the board's recommendations or of the board's deliberations, and so you get a better idea of that reasoning. But we can, we can certainly look at better ways to to get the board's recommendation to you so that it's clear.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you, Heidi, for working on that. And and thank you, Ernie.
Through the chair, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Um, I didn't speak up quick enough. Um, question. Once we get a recommendation from, let's say, any of the boards, it could be BOA, it could be code compliance. Um, we got the recommendation, we're reviewing it, you know, to come before us. If I have a question on one of those recommendations. Am I able to ask these questions through William or through you, Heidi, to get some clarification so that I can make a more sound decision here? On the dais? So, um, it'll just help, I think.
You can. You can always ask us questions.
Say it again?
You can always ask us questions. Um, usually, um. Usually, your staff has the the technical expertise and can answer a lot of the technical, you know, why, why. Staff is giving, um, a certain recommendation, but usually, um, speak to myself or William ahead of time. Because we also don't want to run afoul of any quasi judicial procedures.
Okay.
And I can tell you for a fact that in the case of the planning and zoning boards, whenever we have. Uh, big projects that are coming in that they're hearing, and this happened in the past, uh, couple of years. Where council people had actual questions, so we set up meetings with Chris and myself. To get some of their questions and concerns, uh, uh, addressed, and, uh. They've also spoken to the city attorney at that time to get their questions answered. So there's always a source. You can ask any questions. You can come through me. I'll set up a meeting with Chris. Uh, or you can go through the city attorney. So there is a process for getting your questions answered.
Okay.
You just, you need to be careful with any of the projects that come before you, um, through the. You know, either of the two boards, and then once they reach the council, you you want to make sure that if you are. Um, if for whatever reason you have to send something back to the board, or. Or you're only hearing from one side but not the other, you don't want to create a situation where you're prejudicing. The city. So remember that you are sitting as judges. So so you don't want to, it's like having a conversation with a party that's not in front of you. You want to make sure that. Everybody who's a party to this case has an opportunity to give their, their. Their side and and their explanation and their evidence. So you don't want to prejudice that by only having a portion of people. I don't know that we have any cases coming before you, um, as far as I know. But if we do, um, we'll we'll certainly prepare you ahead of time.
Fair enough, counselor.
Councilman Fett?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that sounds like, so Chris is always present, and is a person that we could ask questions during the meetings. And it seems like if we have questions beforehand, it would be to go through Chris, so. Uh, it strikes me that if we, if we want clarification about. The nuances around, uh, how recommendations were made, it's just a matter of doing your due diligence and. And, uh, reviewing what happened at the, at the meeting.
Prior to the meeting.
Right.
When it's on, when it's on the agenda.
Or or ask it of of Chris either before or during the meeting.
Through the chair, and in in addition on the tale of what, uh, Councilman Fett just mentioned, uh, there is legal representation. At each zone, each adjustment board meeting and each planning and zoning board meeting, there is city legal representation at those meetings. At the other, for the other boards, there is usually department chairs in lieu of legal representation. That's the only difference. And the only thing that really ever comes to us and causes us anything, uh, is on, as I mentioned before, is on appeal. When the people that are appealing a decision made by, um, Adjustment Generally, uh, will come in front of us. And then, like, like you were saying before, Mayor, that's when we become quasi judicial, and we sit as judges. And so anything that that would disrupt the parity of us sitting neutral would be ob- obviously disruptive to the process and. And and on the best interest of the outcome of the case, so, you know. Anyway.
Okay. Any other questions for Ernie? All right, Ernie, thank you again.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We got a lot of information and, uh, a lot of things to, um, to think about. Before this, you know, before the next case comes before us. So thank you again. Thank you. Thank your board members for us, please. Okay, the next one, report is from, um, Chair Marlene Jimenez of the Code Enforcement Board. Welcome, Marlene. How are you?
Good, good. Um, Marlene Jimenez, uh, six twenty Plauer Avenue. Ernie, you are very good up here with no notes. By this time, I'm brain dead, so I have to write everything down. Yeah. So, good evening, Mayor Mitchell and the members of our city council. I am the Madam Chair of the Code Enforcement Board, and I have been on the board for sixteen years. Uh, our board was established in nineteen fifty-two, so it's been around for seventy years. Um, I would like to first thank, uh, all of you for your respective appointees. And also for having the police presence at our, each of our meetings, uh, which we all hope that continues. Uh, you wouldn't believe, but the residents do get a little rowdy with code enforcement when the, when they show up. We presently have a full board, uh, consisting of three men and four women. And of, again, we are volunteers. Uh, we will meet, uh, the first Tuesday of the month. Or whenever the code inspectors have pending cases. Uh, for us, as it takes them plenty of time to put each of one, uh, each one together. But it's usually every other month that we meet, so kind of like six or seven times a year, we have meetings. Our city attorney is always present. To give us, uh, legal recommendations and answer any questions that we may have as a board. Uh, we take our duties very seriously and work diligently to make sure we keep Miami Springs as it always, uh, meant to be. A quiet oasis among the chaos surrounding us. Uh, once we are presented a case, which, uh, each one is different. Uh, we work with the residents to resolve their compliance issues. And provide them with an opportunity to explain why they did not follow our established codes. We also work closely with the inspectors and discuss the amount of times. They have been out to see the property, have made contact with the owners. And also the feedback the owners have provided. At times, the property owners do not take their infraction serious. And ignore citations and warnings given by the inspectors. This forces us to issue orders which include fines and liens with interest to bring their violations into compliance. We definitely are not keen on those that completely ignore the inspectors. And do not show up to the scheduled meetings. We mostly likely will place a daily fine as they never called or emailed the city or the inspectors. To advise why they would not, uh, be present. Uh, and really, our main objection, I mean, our our main of, uh, objective of our code. Uh, compliance code is to protect the main, our, uh, maintain our community's appearance and standards. Um, I'm open to any questions you have. It's, uh. Being on the board for sixteen years, uh, I've seen a lot of change. Um, I can tell you that the residents, most of them, don't care. Uh, we, and I feel bad for the inspectors. We have very little amount of inspectors. Uh, they do a lot of work, I guess. Uh, they have to do all of the. Of putting the 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 case together themselves, and it takes them a long time, so the preparation is very time-consuming. And then to not have these people show up that are on a, you know, a list that they've been given. You know, the, the police officer goes out and gives them the citation, and, you know, they, the the inspectors have gone out a couple of times to the homes. And they've been given, you know, uh, the, the letters, you know, through the U.S. Postal Service, return receipt. And they still don't come. So it's a little frustrating, I think, overall. Uh, we're happy to serve. Uh, we have, uh, various people on the. Uh, board that have been around for over fifteen years, like me. Um, we have two new ones that, uh, I think are going to be really good for us. Um, so. Or, um. I'm ready, I'm ready for your questions.
Through the chair, um, Marlene, thank you for coming tonight and, uh, for all the years that you've been doing this. I mean, it's incredible. Um, and you, and you, and for sure, you've seen changes, I, you know, in 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 mentality, specifically in this town, right? Um, and and it doesn't surprise me that lately we're seeing a little more of, uh, of the, uh, non-compliant types, you know, that, uh, don't want to follow up on stuff. But my question to that is, isn't, doesn't that require you a tremendous amount of paperwork in terms of keeping up with? Each individual case and stuff? And I know you work with, close with the manager's office and with Chris's planning office, uh, but, uh. I I I would think that 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 really can create some serious paper, particularly if it goes further and becomes a legal problem.
We, uh, receive from the inspectors, uh, a whole packet. With about, you know, it could be anywhere from ten to twenty sheets for each case. And then, you know, they they'll put up the case on, on, on the screen. And it takes them a long time, and some, what frustrates us the most, Bob, is that. We sometimes see cases that have been around for three and four years. And they still are not compliant.
You mean like repeats, you mean?
Repeats and and cases that have not come up to the board and 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 have not been taken care of. And I think it's because, uh, probably, uh, due to the fact that. There's been changes in this, in in the, in the, with the inspectors and stuff like that, and. You know, they've retired or they're gone or whatever, so the next inspector has to come in and start, you know. Basically, it's kind of like police work, you know.
Yeah, that's really.
You know, cases that have not been resolved, and then, you know, the next guy comes in and sees new, new things.
Well, you're, you're certainly, your board and, uh, Ernie, Ernie Alana's board is, uh, are the two board with, with the two boards with teeth. You know, those are the two that, uh.
We want to have jaws, actually.
Well, you know what I mean, enforcement capability.
I mean, you know, uh, most of you have lived here for a long time. I've been in the city since eighty-one, and. We want to keep it nice. We want everybody to do what they have to do. To paint, you know, their roofs or cut their hedges or or whatever it is that we have to do. Uh, but it's, it's, it's very, very hard.
Well, some of your cases, and we get them all, are quite entertaining to read, particularly the minutes after you're done meeting. I read, I read those religiously, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Marlene.
Thank you.
Marlene, thank you so much. Um, all of the comments that I was making to Ernie about, um, his board. Obviously, clearly apply to your board too, on the Code Enforcement Board. I've sat in on some of yours, and I'm always amazed at, um, the decision-making process and how. Um, I feel the board really considers. Considers the whole issue individually for each case, how long it's been, you know, what the condition is, how long, um, it's occurred, you know. Um, how receptive the owners have been. It's not by any means a cookie cutter approach. You're. You really consider, and and it takes a lot of effort, um, a lot of passion on all, from all your board members, a lot of dedication, and, um. Again, the amount of time that the, you, particularly fifteen years, you said?
Sixteen, yeah.
Sixteen, oh my goodness, devoting to this, but, um, you know, it's greatly appreciated. You know, we want you to know that really is. It's, um, work that. Um, and and I know people leave there sometimes upset with the board members, but you're doing, um, what you need to do to maintain. The standards that we'd like to to have here in Miami Springs that we expect to have, um. Um, we're, you know, code enforcement is a very difficult job, and like you said, our code enforcement officers.
Yeah.
Um, have a lot of work for each case even before they present it to you, so.
I do.
Um, again, the professional, um, guidance, expertise, input. That your group provides to to our city, um, is greatly appreciated, um, not just for us here on the board, but our residents, um.
You're welcome.
Receive the benefit of that year after year.
Happy to to serve on the board.
And and like we mentioned with Ernie, anything that we can do that you feel that, you know, um, that you would like to bring to us as to, for us to consider ways that we can help your board. Um, function better, be more efficient, um, things go more smoothly or whatever, we'd like to hear. I think so, so many of these boards have been been existing so long that it's just kind of a given that this is how it is and this is how it is, and. You know, um, if there's anything, you have our support, is what I'm saying.
Thank you.
Greatly.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, thank you. Thank you for being here. I, I, um, as Mayor said a little while ago, when Ernie was, uh, speaking. Um, I'm new on the, on the dais, a little new, and I've been trying to get around to the different board meetings. I haven't been to the. A board at Ernie's chair, and but I was at one of your meetings, and I, and I was witness to the fact that there were. Couple of people cited for that evening that didn't show up.
Yeah, it's frustrating.
Including someone whose house looked like they turned it into a car dealership. With cars without tags. Um, I won't ask you what happened with, you know, it'll come up eventually, but I appreciate it, that, you know, that. That there's some folks sometimes feel it's a thankless job, right? You did, you, because you're dealing with. You're dealing with the public, you're dealing with our residents. And oftentimes, either people don't really understand what the particular infraction is, or they have a different understanding of it. And 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 you have to address, uh, all of those things. Um, and, uh, you you mentioned, uh, the, the, the. The board was created, and, uh, this was created in nineteen fifty-two. That's the year of my birth. So I think a lot has happened in Miami Springs. Since then, I am dating myself. Actually, my birthday is in the summer, anyway. Uh, um, that, uh, we've had some conversations here on, uh, on, on, on council meetings. And clearly would, uh, would welcome, as to echo the mayor's words, input, because we know that. Um, there are probably more than one code that needs to be looked at and. And kind of been, you know, what changes or what kinds of things could be done to improve. Uh, the codes and to bring them up to date or to rescind them if they're not applicable, and. I think with all the experiences that you've had, particularly and and the other members of the board, that's going to be very important, us moving forward. We're not going to be able to look at all the codes at all time, because that would be an enormous. Uh, uh, expense to undertake for the city, but eventually, you know, over periods of time, and hopefully other councils. Um, to look at the different codes and compliance and how to, how can we make that better? And obviously. Uh, your experience and experience of the members of your board are going to be indispensable in in that regard, so. Thank you and thank you, members.
Welcome.
What else? Thank you, Marlene. It was nice to meet you.
Thank you, Marlene, and please thank your members for us.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Marlene.
For coming.
Are you gonna give her the good news?
What's that?
In next year's budget, we're gonna increase code enforcement.
Oh, oh.
That's right.
Uh, we had a workshop last week, and one of the things that we'd like to see is for next year's budget, and it's not a given yet, but is to increase code enforcement, and, uh, I think Councilman Fett had had a good idea of. Making the new person just for businesses so that the other ones can concentrate on, so possibly, but, um, we're hoping to do that. We think code enforcement, um, the the work that they do. Um, and and you know, and I know what I hear from residents is, um, you know, we have to call for code enforcement. Well, they're so busy responding to the. The calls that they can't do the regular patrolling sometimes that they need to do, that they should be doing, so hopefully by adding another person.
I think so. I think, I think really, at least three, uh, uh, four would be great, but, um. And I think, you know, the backup in the office, because the paperwork is just, it's like a police officer.
Right.
It's the paperwork is just out of control, but. And and getting the word out, you know, sometimes now when we have cases. We're just not being, being lenient about it. We're just, somebody's gonna have to, you know, realize that this is a serious thing.
Mm-hmm.
you know, realize that this is a serious thing and that someone's gonna have to, you know, pay the price for not coming to the meeting or not doing what they should or, you know, I mean, I, I remember the cases with the hedges. I mean, people went crazy with cutting their hedge. I mean, we had forty people lined up complaining. You remember that?
And now when I go by, most, most of the hedges for the most part, you know, are, you know, and it's
Yeah.
It's, that's the kind of thing that, you know, God forbid, somebody's pushing a stroller and, you know, and the stroller gets hit or somebody's in the little bike, the child bike in front and, you know.
Yeah.
We'd all do it anyway. We'd all cut back our hedges. So why do we gonna wait?
Yeah.
It's.
And, 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 uh, and Councilman Vasquez is correct. There's a lot of, you know, uh, codes that are really outdated. I mean, they were written in the fifties. There's a lot of things that don't exist anymore in the fifties, you know, um. And, and that's something that should be updated, should be changed to our times now. Uh, but I, I think just to get the word out, I don't know, sometimes I, I, we've discussed where maybe in, well, people don't get water bills anymore. That's, that's a problem. Nobody reads their mail. There's no mail to read. But if they had like alerts or something where they know that, you know, what the codes are. I know it comes out on, on the Gazette.
Actually, you know.
We had, we had a discussion on that.
We're, um, we're looking at, um, one of the things that we discussed at the workshop is, um, significantly improving our social media presence um, for the city to communicate, um, with these kinds of things right now. It's like if it's an emergency, people are trying to find out, but not on a regular basis. So hopefully this next year will have a better process and, and, and that's a great, um, suggestion is to include that kind of information in there.
That, that would be very positive because, uh, I, I don't believe that the residents don't know that there's codes. You know.
But we just have to, we have to communicate better with the residents.
They, they have to be aware that they're gonna pay the price at one point. And, and it does wrong for our whole city. Um, and you know, some, some blocks you, you, you drive through and they're like immaculate. And then you go to the next block and it's like, oh my God, look at the skies, you know.
We in the same town? We in the same town?
Yes. You, you think sometimes that you've gone over the, the bridge somehow, you know, but no, you're still on this side of the road. But it's, it's frightening sometimes not to get that input from the residents, that caring. I mean, if I've been here for forty something years, it's because I care about living here. And I think all of you also, which are volunteering your time, you know, uh, and it's always a positive that everyone, you know, gives and, and loves the city and wants everything to be as nice as it will, it's always been. So to keep it that way, so.
All right. So thank you so much. Okay, so, um, the next agenda item is public hearings and we have none for tonight. Um, agenda item nine consent agenda. We have two items. Does anyone wanna pull one of the items um, away for discussion? We want it. Is there a motion on both items?
Through the chair, motion to move nine A, nine B inclusive of the backup information that we have in front of us on nine A.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Best?
Hi.
Councilman Fahad?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes. Hey, agenda item ten, old business. We have none. We move to agenda item eleven, new business. We have a resolution.
This is a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, code designating a portion of Swan Drive between Albatross Street and Cardinal Street as Jake Casiano Drive, providing for authorization and providing for an effective date. Uh, this is something that came through us from, uh, Commissioner Sosa's office, correct?
Yes. Uh, we have, is Mr. Casiano here? He's not here. Okay, uh, Mr. Casiano, um, is a resident of Miami Springs and, um, uh, he reached out to Commissioner Sosa's office and they, um, reached out to us. He had, um, tragically a son, a young son, um, who, uh, passed away, um, at the age of three or four, um, here in Miami Springs due to an illness. And he wanted to ask that we, um, have a street named after him, after his son. And so, um, we, um, I spoke with him and we decided that this portion of Swan Drive between Albatross Street and Cardinal Street is where, um, uh, little Jake lived early in his life.
Correct.
And they would like to designate, um, that as, uh, Jake Casiano Drive. So if there, if we are all agree, we'll take a vote on it and then we'll go ahead, um, and proceed with the process of, it has to go to the county and request that we can do that, right, William? So there'll be a date ahead of, in the future where we have the actual ceremony.
Correct.
So motion to approve, uh, the resolution?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All right, call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Best?
Hi.
Councilman Fahad?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes. Okay, and then, um, the city clerk's office and William will let us know in the future when we're actually having the ceremony. We'll let the family know. Okay, uh, the next resolution B?
Eleven B is a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, supporting the Miami-Dade County Public Schools Board twenty twenty-two state legislative priorities and program, providing for transmittal and providing for an effective date. This is something we do every year when the school board reaches out to us for, for support for their, uh, legislative, uh, program for, from the state. So we recommend that you approve it.
Okay, and that's here. The, the rest, um, their legislative program is here right in our minutes.
It's attached, it's right after the resolution.
Okay, and I reached out to, um, our school board member, Kristi Fraga, and just let her know that we would be, um, having it on the agenda tonight to support, um, uh, uh, the the school board's, uh, twenty twenty-two legislative, um, priorities. So she was very appreciative of that. She's in the middle of interviews for the new school superintendent. So we'll see how that goes. So is there a motion?
Motion for eleven B, ma'am.
Okay.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Best?
Hi.
Councilman Fahad?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes. Resolution C?
The resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Florida Department of Transportation FDOT relating to transportation services, authorizing the acceptance of the grant award from FDOT if awarded. Authorizing the purchase of vehicles and or equipment and the expenditure of grant funds pursuant to the grant award and providing for an effective date.
This is just a grant application for an additional senior center bus. Right, it's so-called the fifty-three ten grant, right, from FDOT? And, um, this, uh, was prepared by our new grant writer, Laquisha and her team. So we recommend approval on this.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Oh, call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Best?
Hi.
Councilman Fahad?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes. And William, this is, so this, this is the second grant that our new grant writer for us. The other one was for the parking, comprehensive parking program and the second one since the fall when
Good for her.
We went ahead and hired her. So that's great.
To one county.
Yep, wonderful. Okay, um, item, agenda item twelve, other business. Um, I wanted to provide an update to the council on the FDOT Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street Project and the Iron Triangle Project at the last council meeting. Um, I advised you that William and I had had a meeting with, um, District Six Secretary Stacy Miller and her, um, Assistant Secretary Daniel Iglesias. They came here to the city, um, hall. We met with them. We, um, discussed, uh, for quite a long time how the North are concerned with the Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street, um, corridor project, how it would devastate our community. Um, we would just be, um, similar to what happened with I ninety-five going through over town. It just destroys a community. Um, and we'd be subjected to the increase in, um, um, when you have increase in volume, increase in, uh, emissions. Um, and, uh, carbon footprints, emissions and noise. The emissions go up in the air and they would drop down on our community, on our residents. We're gonna be the ones breathing it. The increased noise from traffic whenever there's increased capacity, there's increased noise. And I think all of us right now can sit outside at our house at night and hear, um, traffic zooming by late at night. Um, also that, um, this project is designed basically to look at the broad scope of increasing freight. The, the ability from freight to travel from Doral and from the Miami Airport Cargo Area to travel east and west right through our heart. So, um, there's a whole bunch of reasons that we stand to gain nothing from it. Um, and stand to lose a lot. Um, they were, um, very, um, we had a long discussion and they were very receptive to our concerns, to understanding that even though they have to look at the broad picture, this really is a regional, needs to be looked at on a regional basis of the impact to us and to Virginia Gardens. And, um, since that, and also we had, um, sent a letter with Mayor Dino from the Virginia Gardens um, that, uh, representative, we signed on to a letter that Representative Avila sent uh, to FDOT to the, um, State Secretary of FDOT advising them of our concerns of how this project would be detrimental to our community. Um, so we got a response right after, I think the day after um, the council meeting and the letters here, it's the last attachment on the agenda. And I spoke today with Daniel Iglesias, who is the FDOT District Six Director of Transportation Development. And he was here at the city hall at the meeting with, um, Secretary Mill- Miller and William and I. Um, so I spoke with him today to clarify some of the things on this letter to make sure that the information I give you is there's, um, they have decided to not go forward at this time. This doesn't mean it's not, you know, that we're out of the woods by any means, but to put the Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street Corridor project still in the study phase. They're not going to move to the PDNE. Um, they're going to, um, from what he told me is kind of look at it with a fresh set of eyes with new consultants and, um, just look at it again and try to consider other options. Ways that, um, they can provide for that east-west freight movement, um, without, um, affecting Miami Springs and, and Virginia Gardens. Um, so, um, we're kind of, they're back at the drawing board with that, which is good news. Um, they were very receptive to the concerns we had and, um, they said they would consider that going forward. Um, as far as the Iron Triangle Project, which is the, um, corner of Lejeune and Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street, that they have decided to move to the PDNE phase, which is, um, a project development and, um, environmental studies. Um, during that phase, it's past the study phase. Now they're actually looking at engineering, um, uh, environmental issues. Um, this is where they'd really consider the environmental issues, such as increased noise, um, increased, uh, carbon footprints, other issues. Um, and they are moving forward with that. They will have some public sessions and it's really important at this point that we have our community attend these public sessions. One of our big concerns with this project, with the Iron Triangle Project is that they will be extending the, um, one-twelve expressway, uh, ramp, um, heading west into Miami Springs, kind of in front of the EB Hotel and other areas. Um, you know, I think we're all pretty sure of what happens under elevated guideways. And, you know, to have that kind of condition right there in our business area will, um, I think um, negatively affect our businesses. Um, we're a very small community. Um, we depend very heavily on the revenues from our businesses and to have any negative impact on them. Um, as much as, you know, we, we want to support our businesses will eventually, um, definitely hurt our community. So, um, I let them know that we would like to be more involved in just the public sessions, the city. Is there a way that we can be more involved in the process than waiting for the public sessions? And we discussed, um, the possibility of, um, they're going to look into having advisory. Um, let's see what they call that, project advisory committees that would be composed, say, of the business element, which I think would be great. There's several businesses there in that corner that would be affected. Um, and then, um, uh, outreach sessions. So, um, to be continued, I just want you to know that's still on the agenda. When, when we do get the notice on the public sessions, it's really important that our community shows up, we'll be advertising it. There's no set dates that. We also, um, encourage them to have the public sessions here, uh, that we have several facilities like the, the Adult Community Center, the Rebecca Sosa Theater, the Aquatic Center, instead of having it at the, um, in the past where they've had it at the Holiday Inn. I think our, our community would be easier for them to, uh, attend if we have it at one of our facilities. So I'll keep you up to date on anything new. Yes, sir.
Curtis Mansion.
Yeah.
Have a meeting there, that'd get the attention.
Yep, absolutely. So, um, to be continued. I'll keep you up to date with anything on that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Just want you to know that, um, at least for now, the Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street Corridor expanding um, the corridor so that freight can travel ease, easier through our living room, um, is on hold. Any questions, anything?
I guess the only question I would have, Mayor, is, is I, 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 I understand that part one is on hold and back to the study phase. Part two cleared the study phase and now it's going to the environmental and engineering planning stage, right?
Yes.
And isn't it one and the same in a way? Because the flyover will accommodate some of that.
Um, Councilman, you know, from the beginning, we have said that, Mayor Dino has said that, and the FDOT has, has, these are two different projects.
Right.
As far as they're concerned, um, they've given them different numbers. They have different consultants working on them. Um, it makes no sense to me. We keep bringing that up that, you know, the Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street Corridor and the one-twelve should be all one project. Um, they had said that they would look at it and can, you know, think about considering that. But, um, if they were to do that, I, I, at this point, they're not gonna hold up the Iron Triangle. So it's better that they keep continuing to consider it two projects because the only thing that I can see happening is the, our Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street project would be attached to the Iron Triangle, which is moving along.
Further along.
So, right. Um, I agree though, it seems like it, you know, would be all one project, but. Okay, so there's nothing else. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which are reports and recommendations. And we'll start with the city attorney.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Uh, on Friday, I advised you, uh, via email that we had filed a lawsuit against the entity known as Factory Town Holdings. Um, that case has now been assigned. Uh, Factory Town has, uh, hired a law firm to represent them and we will be pursuing all available actions to avoid having a, a continued nuisance. So I will continue to keep you all updated. And if you have any questions, please let me know, but that's where we're at right now.
Thank you so much, Heidi. And, um, and just for the sake of the residents, I want them all to know. And I think the council knows Factory Town is advertising an event, a five-day event in March. We're aware of it. Um, and, and your, our legal team are, um, working hard on, um, you know, like you said, you've filed a lawsuit against them, um, for the noise disturbances. So, um, we're well aware of it and we're working hard to make sure that we're not subjected to, um, to noise disturbance. Healy, you know, has a right to do whatever they want, um, in their areas. Um, but they can't draw us into, you know, their entertainment district and subject us to noise disturbances. So Heidi, thank you and, and all of your firm for all the work that you've been doing on our behalf on that. I know it's, um, been quite lengthy.
And, uh, Mayor, if I might, well, are you still on there? Um, Heidi, I'll be responding to you on your memo that came out relative to the one-on-ones that you wanna have with us. I'll do that here before the week is out to you.
Okay.
Okay, um, anything else, Heidi?
That's all from us.
Thank you, city manager.
Um, I'm gonna turn it over to, um, uh, Kami so she can go over some of the events we're having. But, uh, the main event is next week, uh, some of us will be up in Tallahassee Wednesday and Thursday for day days to, um, try and, uh, bring home some more money like we did last year for the city. So, uh, I believe, uh, four of us are going, right? Um.
I just want to remind everybody about the ongoing testing and vaccination sites, both at the Land Club and our aquatic center. Also, I want to remind people about the the homebound, any of those homebound individuals. It's important, you know, if they if they need some to schedule any testings, that the testings are available Monday through Friday. Just by calling three oh five, six one four, seventeen sixteen. And then also. Any individuals twelve years and all older, also they have homebound vaccinations. And they can call eight 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 two oh one fifty four ninety. Also, the River Cities Festival is going to be back and it's going to begin March fourth, fifth and sixth. And they're looking for any participants for the for booth vendors. We also have our our Public Information Officer has. Started a spring stories again, and she's looking for volunteers. To share some of your history. Of your families and of your any springs. Opportunities to to share some of these projects or or history of the city. And so she looks forward to hearing from some of the applicants. I think she's been interviewing a few of them. And you can always email her at publicinfo@MiamiSprings-dash@L.GO. We also have the Fifth Annual Camp Rec Out. It's the camp camping at Prince Field. It's on Friday, the twenty eighth through Saturday, the twenty ninth. And breakfast will be available Saturday morning and it's twenty dollars per tent with a maximum of six people and that's always a fun event for the. Families and and kids. And then also February fifth, we have another food drive.
Hopefully it's not forty-two degrees at night, right? Do they have the rec rec cook rec out?
Thank you, Tammy. That's a lot of events. That's great. And I know that camp rec out is a lot of fun. I think sometimes they watch a movie at night too. But it's wonderful event, a family event. So I encourage everyone who can to. Grab your family and even if you don't have a tent and don't want to spend the night, you can still go for the evening and just, you know. Leave before you settle down for bed. Okay, Vice Chair, excuse me, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Just a couple of simple things. As far as the. On the board Zoom meetings. The council meetings have been clear, but on the board meetings, it's been really difficult to hear. Clearly what they're saying. And I really want to engage myself into those meetings because it's kind of impossible for me most of the time to come physically. So that's something that I've been trying to see if we can get, if you need something or. Something that can help us just hear us clearly. Because in most of the board meetings, I just, I can't, I can't hear anything. And then I have to wait for the notes and then it's not the same because the notes. It's written in less, you know, less detail than what it is when it's being explained. And I just really want to understand and and. Be engaged in these meetings as I'm there, not trying to. And then there's a glitch, so. Just if we can do something, if you have a recommendation where we can improve that clarity. As far as the code compliance. Item. Marlene brought up a good point about, you know, educating our our city on maybe. I was thinking maybe we can talk to Shannon and she's doing really great, like. Little posts have been done for our different boards. Think the Ecology Board had one, then we had one for the Disability Board, you know, the awareness, maybe once a month or twice a month, a did you know? And maybe an ordinance or or something like you shouldn't do this or that, I don't know. Something simple, but just to kind of create that engagement with our ordinance, because I think if we have. Maybe an outreach in that sense, people just become more aware, maybe just the the most soaring items and then put them out there. It's just a just a thought. It just, it it bothered me when when she said that residents just don't care. So, yeah, so I'll personally be looking into other remedies and then I'll. Cross paths with Heidi because she's obviously a professional in this, but I I want to help our code compliance board because they are putting in a lot of hours. And. We should try and assist them in in that aspect because there there has to be some other other way. The last one, let's see, I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Best.
Yeah, I I don't know if any of you had the chance to read in the Herald on Sunday about. The All Angels, the Closing of All Angels.
It's just the school though, right? Not the church.
It's just the school, right? Yeah, I put a smart, a small blurb in there, just, you know, wishing wishing the students while going forward and. And the Episcopal community, et cetera. But. That's a shame because they 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 were going on for a long time there and it just, you know, this COVID thing hit and. Not only whether I was talking to Jennifer, what's her last name, Manny's there on Saturday. And we talked about it quite extensively and she said, yeah, it was it was mainly the teachers. They couldn't get the teachers. And, you know, like, it's a shame. They just put a new roof on the place, you know, they upgraded the playground. The grounds look as good as they've ever looked. And then the school was out of business. So I just thought it was a shame. They've been good neighbors and we live right near there. So, you know, they have never taken advantage or, you know, parking on people's soils or any of that. They always. It's always very well organized, any event they do there. And, you know, it's just, I guess, from what she told me, they're going to continue to try to. Bring in like charter schools and and things. I guess they've reached out to some already and. For from to rent space there and and going forward, but I don't think it it's not going to be a. An Episcopal. Entity anymore, though it's going to be whatever they rent, whatever they're able to do. So I know they have some churches on Sunday that come in there from Hialeah. Inglesia Baptista is one of them that comes in there. And I think there's one other that comes in, but they're 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 pretty well be, I mean, they they don't do anything out of line, you know, so. I just thought it was a shame. It was a good, it was a good feature story for a change by Theo, other than a couple of statements to be made in there, but we won't get into that. I wish you guys luck. I I really wish I had the opportunity to go up there to Tallahassee with you this time, but I have a pre-engaging. Circumstance that I can, I can, I simply can't avoid. So Mayor, like I told you on the side before, I'll. Give you some feed on that and anything I can offer to help, you know, but you guys, you guys will have a blast.
It'll be the first time in a long time that you're not.
It's the first one I've missed that I can in memory. Yeah, I'll go next year. Thanks very much, Mayor. Nice meeting.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, Councilman Feth.
Yeah, so in the spirit of Mr. Carlson, who had nothing but nice things to say. About us, I just wanted to to just share that I've I've had several people. You know, tell me that they feel like, for what it's worth, they say for the first time, you know, they'll they'll. Qualify it with for a first time in a long time where they, but basically they're they're just appreciative of how they feel about. About the council and and the work that we're doing. And and I I see it as somebody who, you know, even run from the, not on the dais, but from the the gallery. Observed, I think that the goal workshops that we're doing are really helpful. I feel like. The outreach and organization we've tried to. To put forth with respect to volunteer boards has been helpful. I think that members of the mayor and and members of the council and also staff have been proactive in in engaging outside entities. Like, for instance, F dot and 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 others. And I think that the city attorney, Wyserota, they've been very forward-thinking in terms of their actions, like what's happening with Factory Town. So I'm getting very good feedback about the things that we're doing and I I can personally not because I'm sitting on the dais, but. I feel like I see it also and so proud to to be serving alongside you guys and 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 I think making a difference.
Kind of your walk.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Okay, so. Councilman Vasquez.
Actually, I only had one, but you all speaking, so you.
Okay, next time you remind me and we'll start on that end.
I don't mind, actually, I don't mind going first. I was talking to my daughter, one of my daughters the other night. And we're talking about, and I and I let her know that I was in high school, you know, this whole thing about alphabetical order, the students in school.
You were hammered there.
She sat behind me all throughout high school. So.
Next meeting will start on that end, you're right.
First of all, I I I got a nice call from Max Mylum today, you know, if you haven't been to my to Mylum's. You know, they're collecting money, so please donate. There's a nice rendition Manny Perez did on what the what the war memorial is going to look like and and I think it's a really, really nice thing. That we're doing a little explanation of things. And so when you go up to the counter, just, you know, whatever, whatever you can give. Now, I asked him because I knew that this is not an effort that goes on and on. I mean, you know, they they shift around and so. Probably by the end of this week, it might close down or next week, but get your, get your, get your contributions. And as they used to say in Chicago, give early. Get it often. So I'm very, very happy about the effort that he's making there. I want to. I want to thank my colleague, you know, Councilman Best, because we we've been working on this for all over a year. He's the official treasurer of the of the group and we've got some people lined up for some other donations and. And we get the money from the state that's really going to really put us over the top. And and we're going to be doing something in the in memory of those men and women who have lost their lives. In the service to our country, which is a particular breed of of Americans in my book anyway. And so I think that we're going to honor them, we're going to honor them even more than all the people that have come before us. Which started this process back in nineteen forty-five after World War Two. So I think this is. And Miami Springs is one of the few places that does this in the county. Secondly, I was going to say when when the chair was here about, you know, folks not knowing sometimes. If it was, it wasn't until the mayor raised the issue of cutting back the bushes. And what happened that you were hit by a car. That I went and looked at the one between my house and I, and I called William and I said, I think I'm not in compliance here. And he sent the, he sent the the officer over to look at it and they got, we got together with my neighbor and we cut that back. I didn't know, right? It was always kind of funny trying to back out without being able to see. Now it's all nice, so. You know, I think as people learn and understand the importance of it and and the possible consequences. Of hitting someone or someone on a stroll in my block, a lot of people walk up and down. I get runners, I get people with dogs and 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 so forth. Some families with with the walking and they got the, you know, the the baby in the carriage. So that's very, very important. And, you know, about the All Angels is heartbreaking for me because. Full disclosure, my son graduated from there. Right? That's where he did his middle school. And and if you see it. His Eagle Scout project was a huge terrace. That was done so so that the students wouldn't be stepping on the dirt and going into the classroom. So it's a, it's really, it's really sad. And I was talking to an educator from Philadelphia, it's an old friend of mine. And I've heard this across the border in different states. I don't know sure if 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 Walter, you've experienced this, but. The number of teachers that are leaving. Is is amazing. I heard two weeks ago, the, I think it was the Deputy Superintendent of Schools in Broward. Talking about, I I didn't know they, she gave a number, they got like three thousand, four thousand school teachers, something like that. I might be making up the number. And on a daily basis, you might get a hundred absentees. Across the board in different schools, you know, one here, two over there. Lately, they've been getting six and seven hundred. So between COVID, taking care of family. And 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 some of them stepping away from 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 teaching. This is what impacted All Angels and, you know, having helped to find a charter school in Pennsylvania. And I know how hard it is to recruit teachers and good teachers and try to keep them. I'm just sorry that 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 is happening and that I'm hoping that this turns around. You know, as a as a former educator, I guess I'll always be an educator, as a former official educator. Their concerns and and a breaking and breaks my heart too, particularly All Angels. Which, you know, so close and dear to my heart and and our family. So. That's it for me, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Okay, I have a few things. As far as as All Angels, I think we all, you know, appreciate. What a wonderful the church and school has been for our community and, you know. I'm glad that the church will still be there, you know, it's a valued. Very valued presence here in in our community and and hopefully the school will figure out a way to come back. I have a few things that I wanted to mention, two items based on our workshop last meeting. That we discussed that I followed through on. One of them was, we discussed it at our workshop that we would like to revisit the Bed Talks issue again. You know, obviously, you know, with the COVID and the hotels were closed and everything, there was not. A time then to kind of revisit that because they are not collecting any revenues. There was no reason for us to get involved with that, but. I think we all agree that, you know, we need to keep at it. This is, this is money that we're entitled to. It's money that's collected in our community and we're entitled to a portion of it. I I can certainly see the justification that not all of it, but a portion of it to meet this, to provide the services that we need for tourism. So I called Joe Cordino, who is the President of Miami Dade League of Cities. And discussed the issue with him and asked to be put on the agenda of the next Miami Dade League of Cities meeting. So that we can bring it up. I think one of the things we discussed at our workshop is that we need to get. The support of other municipalities. First of all, awareness, because the majority, even Joe Cordino, he doesn't have hotels in Pinecrest. He's the mayor of Pinecrest. They don't have hotels in Pinecrest, but he was unaware of the issue and there's a lot of municipalities that. The issue does affect, impact them. They have hotels in their community and they may not be aware of, you know, how this money is being collected and and none of it is. Is being brought back to them. So we said we wanted to increase awareness and support. Awareness between the municipalities and support from the municipalities for this being an issue much greater than just for us. And so we'll be on the agenda at the next League of Cities meeting, which coincidentally, he said, is scheduled to be here in. Miami Springs. We have them like once a year here in our country club. So it'll be in mid-February. Usually the meetings are on a Thursday. I think it might be the second or Thursday, February, Thursday in February. And we'll discuss it there and when we go up for. Day days after that, I'm staying for the Florida League of Cities events and I'm going to try to. Get that information across, get support for this issue across all Florida mayors. It's certainly something that's not unique to South Florida. So the other agenda item, which is something that we talked, spoke about too at the last workshop was. Increasing. What would I say pedestrian safety and accessibility around downtown and in particular around the circle right now with the new building going up. I think we can all anticipate that we're going to have additional pedestrian. Traffic around the circle. I reached out to the Assistant Director at Miami Dade County. Department of Transportation and Public Works, Darlene Hernandez, and she worked on the circle project and. Asked her if they could revisit some of these issues about improving pedestrian safety. Around the circle, since we have this project going up, which is going to be a lot of potential pedestrians. We also have the site at Berry's Cleaners. Which is a multi-use retail facility, which a lot of people there may be parking near the circle or from there, wanting to go to the circle to Starbucks or whatever. And then we also have the the development at, I think it's Twenty Nine Palmetto, which was a single-family home that is was zoned. Business, I guess, or commercial and is going to have twelve condo units. So there's a quite anticipated, quite a lot of pedestrian activity there. So they're going to come and relook at it and, you know, we discussed how right now is probably a really good time for them to look at it because we are, you can see. What's going up. And and addressing that. And and addressing that. Okay, the other thing is for the schedule at the workshop, we talked about having a separate workshop for the Gateway Overlay District. And I know Erica, well, I guess Erica's online, but I just wanted to remind Erica to start calling us to schedule something for maybe mid October for the workshop for the Overlay District. We were going to look at you know, reviewing, closing any gaps, addressing any issues that we'd like to tighten up on on the ordinance. Did I say October?
Right, I know what you're.
I have no idea why I said October. I mean, February. Now, what do you look at me like, October? You need to read my mind, not what I say. Okay, so mid February sometime, is that kind of to start working on that? And then the last thing is for next week in in Tallahassee and Day Days, I know some of us can go, some of us can't, but I'm really looking forward to that. I think it really makes a difference. And, you know, we ask for a lot of appropriations and I think the last few years that we've a lot of us have been going, we've been getting results for those visits to Tallahassee in the means of, you know, really getting these appropriations. It's, you know, hit or miss, you never know. The the governor could veto anything, even if it goes to the State and House, but we've been pretty successful lately. So that's it. Other than that, thank you everyone so much.
Can I say one more thing, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I I said it earlier to him when I came in. I just want to recognize the triple duty that Juan has been doing
Yes.
over the last week or so. And and we're we're hoping Erica's well and and her daughter and can be back, but when Myra left, you know, they had to pick up that load and and that's all the boards.
Yes, and now we have a new, welcome to our new city clerk. We just have a new addition.
Thank you, Councilman. And yeah, we have Sandra Duarte. She's joined us. Today was her first day, so.
Where's Sandra from?
She came over for the Building Department. For, I think since twenty eighteen.
Oh, okay, wonderful.
We're not short in the Building Department area, are we, no?
All right, thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thank you.